Jaya Rada Mahadav Kujabihaji Jaya Rada Mahadav Kujabihaji Keshodhanandana Braja Janaranjana Hari Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Rama Hari Rama Ramorama Hari Hari Jaya Gauranitay Jayah Gauranitay Gauranitay Jayah Gauranitay Jayah Rada Mahadav Rada Mahadav Rada Mahadav Sri Rade Jaya Jaya Prabhupada Prabhupada Guru Deen Guru Deen Nikkayavoh Radevoh Prabhupada Shri Guru Deen Kijayam Om Jnana Dhimrindasya Annyaranjanashala Khaya Shakshurun Milidamyeena Dasman Shri Gurave Namumishnu Padaya Krishna Prishchaya Bhootale Shrimadhe Vaktivedanta Swami Nidhi Namine Namaste Saraswate Deva Gauravani Prachari Ne Nirvisi Shunyavadi Paschatyade Shatari Ne Jaya Sri Krishna Chaitanya Prabhu Nityananda Shri Advaita Gata Dharasri Vasadi Gauravakta Vanda Hari Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Rama Hari Rama Ramorama Hari Hari Gurave Gaurachandraaya Radhikaya Dhanale Krishnaaya Krishna Bhaktaya Tatbhaktaya Namumaha Dugam Karoti Vaachalam Phangum Lang Khethe Girim Yakripata Mahamande Shri Gurum Deena Tharinam Paramanandhamadavam Shri Krishna Chaitanya Meeishvaram Hari Om Hey Krishna, so we are reading from the book The Path of Perfection by Shilpa Prabhupada So we were reading on chapter number three, we were reading about how to see the Lord, right? What is actually meant by seeing the Lord? We are reading chapter number four, sorry. Right? How to understand the Lord? And we were seeing how, what is the meaning of yoga? We were studying about how yoga means to connect with the Lord and how do we connect with the Lord by understanding about the Lord? And then we also said, what is the best way of understanding the Lord? It's not pratyaksha pramam, it is not about what I see and what I perceive it is not about anumana pramam, it is not about the various assumptions that I make it is about understanding the Lord by shabdha pramam that means hearing from a bona fide person that is the way in which we can understand the supreme personality of Godhead so if a lord cannot be understood by mental speculation the lord cannot be understood by our assumptions the lord cannot be understood by our eyes, right? Because we have not developed the love to see the Lord, isn't it? So how can the Lord be understood? The Lord can be understood by studying the Vedanta Sutra what is Vedanta Sutra? The ultimate knowledge of the Veda that is by Dharmamthus Akshat Bhagavat Pranitham understanding what the supreme lord is telling us through the vedic scriptures that is how we understand about the Lord and now how to understand the form of Krishna, right? We also studied about the three levels of understanding the supreme lord right? Vadantita Tatvavidas Tatvam Yajnana Madvayam Brahmeti Paramatmeti Bhagavanitishabjette right? Brahmeti means understanding the effulgence of the lord, impersonal effulgence of the lord Paramatmeti is to understand that the lord is situated in my heart as paramatma and Bhagavanitishabjette Bhagavan is to understand the supreme personality of Godhead the personal form of the supreme personality of Godhead so how are we to understand the supreme personality of Godhead in his form? With the etatschit anindavigrahav form, that's what we are going to read now so devotees who want to read, may raise your hands, let's continue yeah, so we were here, also how was it possible to understand the form of Krishna? Alright, so we'll read, yeah, yeah, Sindhu Mathaji, go ahead
Yes, Mathaji, I read Shilpa Prabhupada, Jai Pranam, Mathaji So how is it possible to understand the form of Krishna? If it is stated that God does not have eyes, limbs and senses like ours how are we to understand his transcendental senses, his transcendental form? This is not possible by mental speculation we simply have to serve him and then he will reveal himself to us as Krishna himself states in the 10th chapter of the Bhagavad Gita 10.11 Te Sham Eva Nukam Partham Aham Ajnana Jam Tamaha Na Shayami Atmabhavastho Jnana Deepen Abashvata To show them special mercy, eye dwelling in their hearts destroyed with the shining lamp of knowledge the darkness born of ignorance Krishna is within us and when we are sincerely searching for him by the devotional process, he will reveal himself again as stated in the 18th chapter of the Bhagavad Gita 18.55 Bhaktiyam Am Abijanati Yaavan Yes Chashmi Tatvataha Tatoh Maam Tatvato Niatva Vishateeta Danantaram One can understand me as I am, the supreme personality of Godhead only by devotional service and when one is in full consciousness of me by such devotion, he can enter into the kingdom of God thus God has to be understood by this process of bhakti yoga which is the process of shravanam, keethanam, vishnu, hearing and chanting about vishnu this is the beginning of the bhakti yoga process we but here sincerely and submissively we will understand, Krishna will reveal himself shravanam, keethanam, vishnu smaranam, padasevanam, archanam, vandanam, dasyam there are nine different processes in the bhakti yoga system by vandanam we offer prayers and that is also bhakti shravanam is hearing about Krishna from the Bhagavad Gita, Shrimad Bhagavatam, Manada Shastras keethanam is chanting about his glory, is chanting the Hare Krishna mantra this is the beginning of the bhakti yoga process it is not, okay, shravanam, keethanam, vishnu, everything is vishnu and meditation is on vishnu it is not possible to have bhakti without vishnu Krishna is the original form of vishnu, krishnashtu Bhagavan Swayam Krishna is the original form of the supreme personality of Godhead if we but follow the bhakti yoga process, we should be able to understand the supreme and all doubts should be removed
Hare Krishna, thank you, Mathaji yeah, so how do we understand the scriptures? We understand the scriptures through shravanam, right? That's why the Navahangas of bhakti starts with shravanam shravanam, keethanam, vishnu smaranam, archanam, vandanam, dasyam, sakim and atmanivedanam finally, we completely surrender ourselves to the supreme lord, right? And what is the, what is the essential ingredient to practice all of these stages from shravanam to atmanivedanam? Bhakti What is bhakti? Bhakti means devotional service that means when we use our senses to serve the lord, the lord himself will reveal himself to us apart from that, other, other Ashtanga yoga process, the meditation process etcetera sitting in, you know, the pranayama and you know, sitting in a particular posture and doing this form of breathing exercise etcetera is not actually prescribed in this age of Kali because you're not able to focus although you may be sitting down, or even sitting down is not possible, that is another thing but even if we manage to sit down, right? Our mind is going here, there and everywhere, right? Our mind is not with us, right? So in this way, Prabhupada now goes on to explain the Ashtanga yoga process, right? We should also understand that the various processes described in Bhagavad Gita there's karma yoga, jnana yoga, ashtanga yoga all of these parts will take us back home back to Godhead but it is only about the question of time, how many lifetimes are we going to spend doing all of these yogic practices, right? Because Krishna tells in Bhagavad Gita, Nihayavikramana Shostipratyavayonavikyate Swalpam Apisya Dharmasyatrayate Mahato Bhayat if you render bhakti yoga, then the benefits of that will continue life after life whereas in the case of Ashtanga yoga or in the case of jnana yoga, if we don't attain perfection in this life like for example, if I have acquired some Siddhis, that I can become smaller than the smallest or if I can become bigger than the biggest, or I can be, I can fly in the air all that is pertaining to my body, right? When my, when I leave, give up this current body and you know, I get another body, right? Assuming that even if that person gets a human life, right? That person again has to learn all those skills those skills will not get transferred to the next body again you have to start with ABC, going to a school and studying ABC and then you know, maybe he will be able to easily pick up the yoga steps but it has to start, he has to start from the beginning because based on the past inclinations, he might be able to take it up from where he left he may be able to quickly understand and follow those things but the effect of that is not, is not increasing from what it has left over the previous lifetime the only bhakti Krishna says, if we leave at fifty percent, we will start off with fifty-one percent that is given only for bhakti yoga alright, so the Ashtanga process, Ashtanga yoga process outlined very specifically in the sixth chapter of Bhagavad Gita 6.13 to 14 Samam Kaya Shirogrivam Dharyan Achalam Srira Sampreksha Nasika Gramsvam Dishas Chanava Lokayan Prashantatma Vigata Bheer Brahmachari Evratesh Titha Manah Samyamnyam Achitto Yukta Asita Matparaha So we'll read, yeah, Amoshmi Mathaji, go ahead one should hold one's body, so this is describing how to practice Ashtanga yoga and what are the regulations required? Go ahead, Mathaji
Hare Krishna, Mathaji, Dandvath Pranam
Hare Krishna, Dandvath Pranam
One should hold one's body, neck and head in a straight
erect in a straight line and
steady, steadily at the tip of, tip of the nose thus we can unagitated subdued mind devoid of fear, completely free from sex life one should meditate upon me within the heart and make me the ultimate goal of life yoga does not mean going to some class, paying some money engaging in gymnastics and then returning home to drink, smoke and engage in sex such yoga is practiced by societies of, of the characters and the cheated the the, the authority, the
Authoritative yoga system
Authoritative yoga system is here outlined by the supreme authority, Sri Krishna himself is there a better yogi than Krishna, the supreme personality of Godhead? First, first of all, one has to go alone to the holy place and sit in a sightline, holding one's body, neck and head erect and stare steadily at the tip of the nose why, why is this? Is, this is a method to help concentrate one's mind that that that, that is real, real purpose of yoga however is to concentrate one's mind, one's mind that's all, the real purpose of yoga the real purpose of yoga however is to keep oneself always aware that Lord Krishna is within one of the dangers, one of the dangers of sitting in meditation and staring at the tip of one's nose is that of, that one will fall asleep I have, I have seen many some, many so-called meditators sitting like this and snoring as soon as one closes his eyes, it is natural to feel sleepy therefore, it is, therefore it is recommended that the eyes are half closed thus it is said that one should look at the tip of his nose with, with one's sight thus concentrated, the mind should be subdued and unagitated in India, the yogi often goes to the jungle to practice such meditation in solitude but in a jungle, the yogi may think, may, maybe some tiger or snake is coming what is, what is that noise? In this way, his mind may be agitated therefore, it is especially stated that the yogi must be devoid of fear deer, deer skin is especially recommended as a yoga asan because it contains a chemical property that repeals snakes thus the yogi will, because yogi will not be disturbed by, disturbed by serpent whatever the case, serpent, tiger or lion one can be truly fearless when, only when he is established in Krishna consciousness due to perverted memory, the conditioned soul is naturally fearful fear is due to forgetting once eternal relationship with Krishna according to Shrimad Bhagavatam 11.2.37 Bhayam, Bhayam
Bhayam Dvitya Abhiniveshata Syad Ishad Apitasya Tiparayoyo Asmrthihi
Krishna consciousness provides the only true base, basis for fearlessness therefore, perfect practice of yoga is not possible for one is one who is not Krishna conscious
Hare Krishna, thank you, Mathaji so this verse it says Bhayam Dvitya Abhiniveshata Syad Ishad Apitasya Tiparayoyo Asmrthihi right? Bhayam is because of Asmrthihi, right? Why are we feeling fearful? We are fear, we are feeling fearful because we have forgotten the supreme personality of Godhead Asmrthi, Smriti means memory, right? Mata Smritir Jnana Abhohanamcha right? Krishna gives us memory, so Smriti is memory Aiparayoyo Asmrthihi that means we have forgotten the supreme personality of Godhead and because of our forgetfulness of the supreme personality of Godhead, what are we doing? We are being fearful, we are being fearful of all the material conditions why is there fear in the material situations? Because the situation is continuously changing, right? There is no eternity in the, in this material world, right? There is no eternity in this material world because things keep changing and we don't know what is going to happen next and that is why we are filled with fear so how do we come out of this fear, of anxiety, of the fear of unknown, right? How do we come out of this? Simply by, by praying at the lotus feet of the supreme personality of Godhead right? Going as coverage goes for me, we all know the song Adhisang Bajahuremana Sri Nandanandana Abhayacharana Ravindare if we remember the lotus feet of the supreme personality of Godhead and we always worship him, then what happens? Fearlessness becomes established in our heart Bajahuremana, that means, oh my mind, think of the lotus feet of Krishna think of Sri Nandanandana, then what happens? Abhayacharana Ravindare by, by surrendering at the lotus feet of Krishna, Abhayam, Abhayam or fearlessness is the consequence of our remembrance of Krishna alright, so yeah, so what else did we read here? Two, three very important points, yeah like deer skin is prescribed, why? Because it has a chemical problem, it triples snakes, doesn't matter, right? If somebody is completely surrendered at the lotus feet of the lord then you know, he is not agitated by snakes or anything else because he is not in the bodily platform, right? Only when we are bodily, in a situated in the bodily platform we think that, oh, this can cause convenience to me, this causes inconvenience to me this will cause pleasure to me, this will cause pain to me, right? So all of this, when one engages in the meditating process especially if we sit down and close our eyes, everything, all thoughts of everything in the world will come to us at that time only, right? Whenever we are trying to focus on something, that is when we think, oh, that is when all the thoughts will come, right? Even when we are doing some activity, that's why yoga, which is like sitting down and closed, closed eyes is not prescribed for this age we sit down and close our eyes means, apart from what we intend to do, we think of everything else that is the nature of the mind, isn't it? So that is why when we engage, we are engaging our hands and holding the beads, moving the beads our mouth in chanting the mantra aloud, when you're doing all of that, then what happens? Because our senses are engaged, our mind focuses, focuses on moving the beads, hearing the mantra you know, calling out the mantra like that so that is why engage our senses in the service of the lord otherwise, if we go to sit in meditation, like Prabhupada mentions here if we close our eyes, we will go to sleep and then we don't know whether it is samadhi on Krishna or you know, tamasic samadhi where we are completely in ignorance and sleeping, isn't it? So that is why, Rishi Keen, Rishi Keisha Sevanam Bhakti Ruchate always better to engage our senses, walking, walking to the temple of the lord offering obeysances to the lord, right? When we are offering obeysances to the lord, that time, our mind and body are all situated there ah, but when we are simply sitting and doing nothing, we know that our mind is not there, mind is already gone elsewhere that's why it's prescribed like this, alright okay, so let's continue here, okay, some more things about the yogi is given here, what who is a yogi? right? The yogi must be completely free from sex life, right? at least in bhakti yoga, Krishna himself says that I am that sex life which is non-contrary to religious principles, right? Krishna himself tells so whatever propensities we have, we can doubtake late in Krishna's service only in bhakti yoga in rest of the yogas, right? What are we supposed to do? We are supposed to completely give up, right? And then we also know about these words, right? Jaya To Vishyan Hum San Sangastesho Pajate right? While ever we, we physically or forcibly try to abstain ourselves from certain activities but our mind is already dwelling there our mind is thinking of the pizza and then I'm thinking, no, I should not be having the pizza, right? But bhakti yoga, how does it do? Bhakti yoga helps us to actually prepare the pizza at home, offer it to Krishna and have the pizza, right? So that our desire is also fulfilled, we also serve the lord and then we've had Krishna Prasadham also so there is no artificial renunciation in bhakti in bhakti, we doubtake our propensities, whatever we want to do, we first want to offer it to Krishna of course, we need to follow the four regulated principles, alright let's move forward, who will read? Okay, Jyoti Mathaji, go ahead the yogi must also be Jyoti Shridhar Mathaji, are you there? Okay, fine, let me read and Mathaji, when you're available, you can, you can switch on your camera, then I know you're there alright, the yogi must also be completely free from sex life if one indulges in sex, he cannot concentrate therefore, brahmacharya, complete celibacy is recommended to make the mind steady okay, Sarvagupshri Mathaji, go ahead by practicing celibacy
Hare Krishna, Mathaji, Dandvath Pranam By practicing celibacy, one cultivates determination one modern example of such determination is that of Mahatma Gandhi who was, who was determined to resist the powerful British empire by means of non-violence at this time, India was dependent on the British and the people had no weapons the British had been more powerful, easily cut down whatever violent revolution the people attempted therefore, Gandhi resorted to non-violence and non-cooperation, I shall not fight with the British as he planned and even if they react with violence, I shall remain non-violent in this way, the world will sympathize with us such a policy required a great amount of determination and Gandhi's determination was very strong because he was a brahmacharya although he had children and their wife, he renounced sex at the age of of thirty-six it was this sexual renunciation that enables him to be so determined that he was able to lead his country and drive the British from India thus, refraining from sex enables one to be very determined and powerful it is not necessary to do anything else this is a secret, people or this is a secret, people are not aware of if you want to do something with the determination, you have to refrain from sex regardless of the process, be it hatha yoga, bhakti yoga, jnana yoga or whatever sex indulgence is not allowed sex is all allowed one day for householders who want to be getting children and raised them in Krishna consciousness sex is big not meant for gen, although sex is allowed only for those who get the children raised in the Krishna consciousness, not meant for sense enjoyment although, say enjoyment is there by nature unless there is some enjoyment, why should one assume the responsibility of regretting children? That is the secret of nature's gift, but we should not take advantage of this these are the secrets of life by taking advantage and indulging in sex life, we are simply wasting our time if one tells you that you can indulge in sex so much
As much as you like
As you like and at the same time become a yogi, he is cheating you if some so-called guru tells us, tells you to give him money in exchange for some mantra and that you can go or go on and engage in all kinds of nonsense he is just cheating you because he wants something sublime and yet want it cheaply we put ourselves in a position to be cheated this means that we actually want to be cheated if you want something valuable, we must pay for it we cannot expect to walk in a jewelry store and demand the most valuable jewel for mere ten cents no, we must pay a great deal similarly, if you want to perfection in yoga, we have to pay by abstaining from sex perfection in yoga was not something childish and the Bhagavad Gita instructs us that if we try to make yoga into something childish we will be cheated there are many cheaters awaiting us, waiting to take our money, giving us nothing and then leaving but according to Sri Krishna's authoritative statement in the Bhagavad Gita one must be completely free from sex life being from, free from sex, one should meditate upon me within the heart and make me the ultimate goal of life, this is the real meditation
Hare Krishna, thank you, Mathaji
Hare Krishna
Hare Krishna, so what is real meditation? Real meditation is not going into the forest and sitting down there and trying to meditate because we will not be able, never be able to meditate anything at that time, right? Because our mind will be wandering the right kind of meditation is what Prabhupada is giving here, is to regulate our senses Yukta Ahara Viharasya Yukta Cheshesya Karmaju Yukta Swatnaavodasya Yogobhavati Dukaha, right? that means yukta ahara, that means like we study in Nectar of Instruction, right? Vachyo Vegam Manasakroda Vegam Jibba Vegam Udar Upasta Vegam Etan Veganyo Vishaheta Deera Sarvam Apima Pratimsasushat, right? it is said that the tongue, the belly and the genitals, they are in a straight line if you control the tongue and have only Krishna Prasadham and talk only about Krishna then if you control the tongue, automatically the belly and the genitals are automatically controlled because they are in a straight line, right? here Prabhupada is especially talking about regulating sex life, right? it should not be for the purpose of enjoyment it should only be for the purpose of procreating Krishna-conscious children and also, you know, more important than giving up the sexual activity is to meditate upon the lotus feet of Krishna, right? the attachment to Krishna automatically makes us detached to these sense objects, right? we need not especially endeavor to, to detach ourselves from sense objects, right? but if the more we attach ourselves to Lord Shri Krishna then the more attachment to material objects automatically is a consequence that will happen on its own like that okay, so that's what is there so and what next is Prabhupada is talking about, what is Krishna's recommendation? what are we supposed to meditate on, right? we are talking about meditation, but are we supposed to meditate on the void? or are we supposed to meditate on the brahmani fulgences of the lord? are we supposed to meditate on the paramatma in our heart? what are we supposed to meditate on? that's what is the next paragraph, who will read? Okay, Namkishori Mathaji, go ahead
Hare Krishna, Mathaji, Dandvath Pranam Thank you, Mathaji Krishna, Krishna does not recommend meditation on the on the void, void, he specifically states, meditate upon me the vishnu murti is situated in one's heart and meditation upon him is the object of yoga this is the sankhya yoga system as first practiced by Lord Kapital Deva in an incarnation of god by sitting straight, staring steadily at the tip of one's nose subduing one's mind and extending from sex or may be able to concentrate the mind on the vishnu murti situated within the heart when we refer to the vishnu form or vishnu murti, we refer to Shri Krishna in this Krishna consciousness movement, we are meditating directly to Shri In this Krishna consciousness movement, we are meditating directly to Shri... Uh, Shri Krishna, this is the process of practical meditation. The members of this movement are concentrating their mind on Krishna. Regardless of their particular occupation, one may be working in the garden and digging in the earth, but he is thinking, I am cultivating beautiful roses to offer to Krishna. One may be cooking in the kitchen, but he is always thinking, I am preparing a palatable food to the... To be offered to Krishna. Similarly, chanting and dancing in the temple are form of meditating on Krishna. Thus, the boys and girls in this society for Krishna consciousness are, uh, are perfect yogis because they are meditating on Krishna twenty-four hours a day. We are teaching the perfect yoga system, not according in our personal whims, but according to the authority of the Bhagavad Gita. Nothing is conquered or manufactured. The verses of the Bhagavad Gita are there for all the...
All to see.
Uh, all the, uh... All the, all to see, the activities of the Bhakti yogis in this movement are so molded that the practitioner cannot help but think of Krishna at all the times, meditating upon me within the heart and make me the ultimate goal of life. Shri Krishna says, this is a perfect yoga system and one who practices it prepares himself to be transferred to Krishna Loka. Uh, Mathaji, should I read this?
Yeah, read Mathaji.
Thank you, Mathaji. Thus, practicing constant control of the body, mind and activities, the mystic transcendentalist, the mind regulated attends to the kingdom of the god, for the kingdom of God, for the award of Krishna by cessation of material existence, Bhagavad Gita six point fifteen. It is stated in Sanskrit in the, in these words, shantim nirvana paramam. Uh, that is one attain peace through nirvana paramam of the cessation of material activities. Nirvana does not refer to the void, but to putting an end to materialistic activities unless one puts an end, end to them. There is no question of peace when Hiranyakashubha asked his fire old son Pralath Maharaja, my dear boy, what is the best thing you have thus far learned? Pralath immediately replied, tat sadhu manye suravarya dahi namasada samudh vighna diham asadgrahat. My dear father, oh greatness of the demons, material peoples are always full of anxiety because they have accepted as real that which is non-permanent. The word asadgrahat is important because it indicates that materialistic are always hankering to capture or possess something that is non-permanent. History affords us many examples. Mr. Kennedy was a very rich man who wanted to become president and he spent a great deal of money to attain that elevated position. Yet although he had a nice wife, non-permanent, unfortunately, uh... Sorry, wife, children and the presidency, everything was finished within a second in the material world. People are always trying to capture something that is non-permanent. Unfortunately, people do not come to their senses and realize, I am permanent, I am spirit soul. Why I am hankering after something that is non-permanent? We are always busy acquiring comforts for this body without consider... Without consider, uh...
Hare Krishna Mathaji, thank you. Yeah, thank you. So here, um, here what are we, what are we reading about? We are talking about how we are, we are permanent. We are permanent means what? We are eternal. Because there is no time that we have never been existed nor will be at any time cease to exist, right? Right? Krishna tells in Bhagavad Gita at origina, I also existed in the past, I am existing in the present, I am existing in the future. Similarly, you also existed in the past, you are existing now, you will exist in the future also. But, uh, but I remember all of my previous births, but you don't remember. That's what Krishna is telling origina. So here also, when Hiranyakashubha asked Pralath Maharaj, what did I... Because Hiranyakashubha was so much in anxiety, he was trying to kill Pralath by all means and Pralath was not getting killed. And then Hiranyakashubha and Pralath Maharaj is so peaceful. So Hiranyakashubha was asking Pralath, what is the secret of your peace and bliss? Hmm, and then Pralath Maharaj is saying, I am also getting all the knowledge from the peace you are also getting. Why? Because Krishna is present at the superstar and Hiranyakashubha's heart also and also in the heart of Pralath Maharaj, right? So asadgrahat, hmm, right? Na baved grahim indriyai, sevun luki, what is that? Ata Shri Krishna nayana maati, na baved grahim. Grahim indriyai, grahim means what? Understand, to comprehend, the absolute truths. Ah, by, by the senses is not possible, na grahim, we studied there. Here also asadgrahat. Asadgrahat means, why are we trying to understand or capture or possess something which is asad, which is temporary, which is not the truth? Hmm, because we are trying to attach ourselves to something temporary, we are always in anxiety, right? Prabhupada gives example of Kennedy here, right? Suddenly he died and then he had to, he had to, although unwillingly, he had to give up his wife, he had to give up his children, presidency, everything was taken away, right? Krishna tells in Bhagavad Gita, mrtu sarva haraschaham, right? Everything will be taken away at the time of death, right? So we should not be unnecessarily attached to all these things of this material world, knowing well that anytime it can be taken away from us. So why should we hanker for something that is not permanent? Rather, you should hanker for something that is permanent. What is that? The service to the supreme personality of Godhead, our love for the Lord, hmm? That is what we should hanker for because having obtained that, we don't have to take a birth in this material world. Having obtained that, we don't have to go through janma mrtu jaravyadi. Having obtained that will automatically have this loving propensity towards the supreme personality of Godhead. So why should not be hanker for that which is eternal, rather than hankering for the material enjoyments of this world like that? Okay, so let's continue, um... Now who will read? Uh, Jyoti Mathaji, are you there?
Yes, Mathaji.
Yes, go ahead, Mathaji. Next to Nagavini Mathaji, you can read and then we'll end. Yes, go ahead, we are always busy.
Hare Krishna Mathaji. Last time also it was not opening, sorry.
Yeah, I mean when you raise your hand, nah, then I unmute you because there's sometimes disturbance. That's why I muted it.
Okay, Mathaji. We are always busy acquiring comfort for this body without considering that today, tomorrow or in a hundred years, this body will be finished. As far as the real, I is connected, I am the spirit soul, I have no birth, I have no death. What then? It is my proper function. When we act on the material platform, we are engaged in the bodily functions. Therefore, Pralath Maharaj says that people are anxious because all their activities are targeted to capturing and processing something non-permanent. Uh, non-permanent, all living entities, men, men, bees, birds or whatever are always full of anxiety. And this is the material disease. If we are always full of anxiety, how can we attain peace? People may live in a very nice house, but out, out front they place sign saying, beware of dog or no... Or road trespassers. This means that although they are... What, Mathaji?
Trespassers.
Trespassers. This means that although they are living comfortably, they are anxious that someone will come and molest, molest them. Sitting in an office and earning, earning a very good salary, a man is always thinking, oh, I hope I don't lose this opposition. The American nation is very rich, but because of this, it has to maintain a great defense force. So who is free from anxiety? The conclusion is that if we want to peace without anxiety, we have to come to Krishna conscious, there is no alternative. In order to... Shall I read that one, Namaskar?
Yes, go ahead, in order to retain peace?
In order to attain the peace, we must meditate on Krishna and by meditating on Krishna, we can control the body. The first part of the body to control is to tongue and the next part is the genital. When these are controlled, everything is controlled. The tongue is controlled by chanting and eating Krishna prasada as soon as, as soon as the tongue is controlled, the shramak is controlled and the text and the next genital are controlled. Actually, controlling the body and the mind is a very simple process. When the mind is fixed to, fixed on Krishna and had no other engagement, it is automatically controlled. Activity should always be centered on working for Krishna, gardening, typing, cooking, cleaning, whatever. By engaging the body, mind and activities in the service of the Krishna, one attains the supreme nirvana, which, which abides in Krishna. Everything is in Krishna, therefore we cannot find peace outside Krishna-conscious activities.
Hare Krishna, thank you, Mathaji. So, parandrakta, niwarta de, right? We cannot artificially renounce, however, if we develop taste for higher activities. Like, uh, you know, uh, doing gardening, that means I am using the flowers in the service of the Lord. If I am going to purchase vegetables and utilizing my cooking, the vegetables, cooking rice, cooking dal, cooking sabji for offering it to the Lord. Hmm, then those activities become spiritualized by engaging our body, right? Body is walking, getting the vegetable, uh, you know, washing the vegetables, cutting the vegetables, cooking the vegetables on the town, the gas, etc. Mind, right? If I'm not, if my mind is not there, I will not know, have I put one spoon of salt or two spoons of salt, right? Whenever, when you are cooking, our mind is completely there on the cooking, right? How much salt should I pour, how much of, uh, you know, chili powder I should pour, how much of hing I should put, whatever it may be, whatever I am putting, right? So my mind is also there, why? Because my, my hands and legs are being engaged in an activity, right? Otherwise, we don't know where our mind is going. But when you are acting or when you are working for the pleasure of the Lord, we know exactly what we are doing, where our mind is. The way, the mind is where? Uh, the body is engaged, like for example, if you are stringing a garland, if we have a particular, you know, two yellow flowers and then one red flower and then one yellow flower, white flower like that. So our mind is thinking, okay, next which one I should eat, I should take, right? It's not that, uh, you know, we are just doing as we like, no. Everything has certain rules and regulations and our mind should be engaged how to follow those rules and regulations. So that our mind can be fixed on those Krishna-conscious activities and that is the way to find peace. Hmm, not acting according to our whimsical day, whatever I want to do, I will do. In that way, we are giving the remote control to our mind and then the mind drags us wherever it wants to drag us. But we won't utilize the mind as our servant. We want to tell the mind, this is what you have to do and the mind has to focus on that activity. Hmm, in this way, we will be able to control the mind. Alright, so now in the next section, Prabhupada is going to talk about, uh, what is the ultimate goal of yoga? The ultimate goal of yoga is not to become fit, is not to have a six-pack body, uh, is not to have, uh, you know, agility, uh, you know, or, uh, what do you call, uh, they say fitness of the body, that's not, that's not the goal of yoga. Those may be side benefits of yoga, right? But what is the ultimate goal of yoga? That is what is described here. Uh, so let me share my screen, so we'll end with this. Uh, who will read? Yeah, Nagavini Mathaji, go ahead, we'll end with you, yes. The ultimate goal of yoga... Mathaji, you are there, unmute yourself. Hare Krishna. Okay, fine, let me start reading and then you join it. The ultimate goal of yoga is thus clearly explained. Yoga is not meant for attaining any kind of material facility, it is to enable the cessation of all material existence. As long as we require some material facilities, we will get them, but these facilities will not solve the problems of life, right? They will not help me get over janma mrtu jaravyadi. I have traveled throughout the world and it is my opinion that American boys and girls have the best of the material facilities, but do they have peace? Can anyone say, yes, I am completely peaceful? This is so, why are American youngsters so frustrated and confused? As long as we practice yoga in order to attain some material facility, there will be no question of peace, right? We can also continuously check ourselves also, hmm, that even though we are practicing devotional service, if our mind is continuously in turbulence, our mind is completely in anxiety all the time, oh, will I get this, will I get that, what, what am I going to do, right? That means to the extent we are always anxious, we are not surrendered to the Lord. That is also a way by which we can introspect ourselves. Uh, if you are too much anxious, we need to sit down and we think, uh, how am I surrendered to the Lord? Why am I feeling so much anxious? Because what is not within my control is within the control of the Lord, uh, who is my best friend. So what is the need, uh, to actually be, um, to be anxious about, yeah? Yeah, okay, Nagavini Mathaji, go ahead. Yoga should only be practiced. Mathaji, you need to unmute yourself. Are you getting the prompt to unmute yourself? Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, 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 Hare, Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Ram, Ram, Hare, Hare. Okay, for some reason, I don't know, you are not able to unmute yourself, I don't know. Okay, so let's continue, yoga is meant for re-establishment of our lost relationship with Krishna. Yoga means to connect, to connect with whom? To reconnect back with Krishna. Generally, one joins a yoga society in order to improve one's health, to reduce fat. People in rich nations eat more, become fat and then they exorbitant prices to so-called droga instructors in order to reduce the weight. Hmm, people try to reduce by all these artificial gymnastics. They do not understand that if they get, eat just vegetables or fruits and grains, they will never get fat. People get fat because eat voraciously, because they eat meat. People who eat voraciously suffer from diabetes, overweight, heart attacks, etc. And those who eat insufficiently suffer from tuberculosis. Therefore, moderation is required and moderation in eating means that we eat only what is needed to keep our body and soul together. If we eat more than we need or less, we will become diseased, hmm, wonderful, right? So yuktahahara, viharasya, yuktachesas, chikarmashu, yuktaswaptnavagodasya, yogobhavati dukkaha. Right? We are inviting trouble for ourselves when we eat more than what is required. Or we don't eat, right? Sometimes they go, they go into some kind of diet, right? Diet means, uh, they, they don't eat anything, uh, they simply go on, you know, full diet, not eating anything for days together, right? Such kind of extreme fasting is also not prescribed and such kind of overeating is also not prescribed. We fast on certain days like ekadashi, janmashtmi, gora purim, etc. But that is also to increase our bhakti, not to become, not to some satisfy some of our material demands, right? People in the offices, factories and all, they do that. They go and sit down, uh, in front of, um, you know, uh, the chief minister's house and they fast endlessly, endlessly. That is not bhakti, right? They want to just satisfy their sense gratification. Hmm, so what is bhakti? Bhakti means we follow rules and regulations given in the vedas. Dharmam tusakshat bhagavat pranitam. Krishna has told us in the vedas, what are we supposed to observe? What are the dos? What are the not-to-dos? When we should fast, why we should fast, how long we should fast and when we should break our fast? I mean that is given, parana time, within this time we have to break our fast. Everything is given by the supreme lord. What do we need to do? We need to hear from a bona fide spiritual master, apply it in our life and perfect our human form of life. So with that, we'll end today's session. Jagat Guru Shri La Prabhupada Ki Jay. Shri La Guru Deva Ki Jay. Anantikaoti Vaishnava Vrind Ki Jay. Vitai Gaurapremanande, Hari Hari Gol. Vansha Kalpataro Bhascha. Prapasindo Geevacha. Adithana Pavaneviyo Vaishnaveiyo, Namo Namo Ha. Anantikaoti Vaishnava Vrind Ki Jay. Jagat Guru Shri La Prabhupada Ki Jay. So we'll quickly do about a couple of minutes, Hari Nam Sangirtan and then we'll end our session, right? Swammyeva swarathyada. So we are begging for the mercy of the Lord to reveal himself to us. Otherwise, any amount of our reading, our trying to understand with our mental intelligence, we will not be able to understand the Lord. But if the lordships are pleased by our devotional service, if they are pleased by our endeavor to study and understand Shri Prabhupada's books, then by the Lord will reveal himself to us and that is the way by which we can understand the supreme lord. then by the Lord will reveal himself to us and that is the way by which we can understand the supreme Lord. Amma, Krishna Padaya, Krishna Prishaya Bhukale. Sinate Bhaktivedanta, Swaminiti Namine. Namaste Saraswate Dele, Gauravani Prachariné. Nirdiseshav Shunyavadi, Paschadja Disha Thari. Jaya Sri Krishna, Kaitanya, Prabho Nitya Nanda. Sri Advaita, Kadada, Siva Sadhu, Gauravata, Vrindhinda. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Ram Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Ram Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Ram Rama, Hare Hare. Jaya Gauranitai, 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 Jaya Gauranitai. Jaya, Jaya Jagannath Balade, Subhadra, Sudarshani. Jagannatha Swami, Nayana Pada, Gami, Nayana Pada, Gami. Pavatumé, Jaya Gauranitai, Jaya Gauranitai, Gauranitai, Jaya, Gauranitai, Jaya. Balagopal Jaya, Balagopal, Balagopal Jaya, Balagopal Jaya. Jaya Prabhu Pa, Jaya, Jaya Prabhu Pa, Jaya Prabhu Pa, Jaya, Jaya Prabhu Pa. Jaya Guru Deva, Jaya Guru Dev, Jaya Guru Dev, Jaya, Jaya Guru Dev. Nitaigora Hari Bol, Hari Bol, Hari Bol, Hari Bol. Nitaigora Hari Bol, Hari Bol, Hari Bol, Hari Bol. Nitaigora Hari Bol, Hari Bol, Hari Bol, Hari Bol. Hari Nam Sankirtan Ki Jay, Jagat Guru, Srila Prabhupada, Srila Gurudeva Ki Janantakoti Vaishnava, Vrindaki Jay. Mitai Gaurapremanande, Hari Hari Bol. All Gauris, Assamali Gauris, Hare Krishna, All Gauris, Assamali Gauris, Hare Krishna, All Gauris, All Gauris, All Gauris. Sri Sri Guru and Sri Gauranga, Srila Prabhupada Ki Jay. So Mal, we have to rain, Nagavini Mathaji, your hands are raised but I cannot see you whether you are there or not also, I don't know. So I don't know, again, two, three times I tried but I couldn't get you. All right, Mahashmi Mathaji is there, Sindhu Mathaji, Navkishori Mathaji, Karbukavali Mathaji, Sarvagopeshwari Mathaji, Vijalakshmi Priya Mathaji, Nisham Mathaji, Janty Mathaji, Hari Bol. Most of the Gauris are switching on your camera straight, thank you very much. Vanchakalpatarobiyascha, Krupa Sindhu Geevacha, Adhitana Pavani Bhiyo, Vaishnave Bhiyo, Namaha. Anantakoti Vaishnava, Vrindaki Jay, Jagat Guru, Srila Prabhupada, Srila Gurudeva Ki Jay. Mitai Gaurapremanande, Hari Hari Bhol. So we'll meet tomorrow for our Brahmu Murtha chanting. Okay, I am very much there, Mathaji. Thank you so much, Mathaji. Thank you for participating. Maybe we'll start with you tomorrow if you join in, Hare Krishna. So we'll meet tomorrow morning for Mangalaarti and then we will, I mean Mangalaarti in a sense, Brahmu Murtha chanting session and then of course we do Mangalaarti at home. So we will meet at five o'clock tomorrow morning as we continue with our devotional service, the most important devotional service, which is chanting of the Hare Krishna Mahamitra. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare, Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Ram Rama, Hare, Hare. Hare Krishna, so everyone can unmute themselves, anything to be shared, any queries, we can take up that now, Hare Krishna. Srila Prabhupada Ki Jay. Hare Krishna, so I hope all of you, Hare Krishna, Mathaji, Dhyanath Pranam, all of you.
A question, question.
Yeah, ask it, ask it.
A question is, that is, what is the class of bhakti? Top. You said fifty percent, if you do it in your life, assume it, fifty percent you will not do it, but then in the next life, fifty one will start.
You are saying hundred percent, say it.
Your system is full, you know, my system.
No, no, I said, Krishna Bhagavad Gita, we are telling, there are three doors. As Jiva, we are just telling in English, I don't know if everyone knows Hindi, I also don't know much of Hindi but, yeah. So as Jiva, we can only desire, if we have ambition, and we will work hard, work hard means we perform under the guidance of Guru, we chant Hare Krishna Mahamitra, then success is assured. We do not worry about the success, right? Sambandha, Abhijaya Prayojana, Sambandha, we know, Krishna is serving us. Abhijaya is what? Shranam, Kirjanam, Vishnu Smaranam. Okay, Nagavini Mathaji, you are able to unmute now, I can hear you.
Yeah, Mathaji, till now I was not able to unmute, I don't know why.
Okay, okay, no problem.
Reading three times, I was, but.
With me also it happened like that only, Mathaji.
Yeah, 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 so you need to be ready to unmute then, then you are asked to unmute.
Mathaji, when you unmute, no, you have to give two seconds or three seconds.
Yeah, yeah, there is lot of time we give to unmute, but you know, if you are not there and you are coming from kitchen, then it becomes a problem.
No, Mathaji, I was very much here only, but I was not able to unmute like.
Okay, okay, okay.
I wrote message also.
Okay, Mathaji, tomorrow we will start with you.
Why did you change your bedtime? Is it permanent?
No, no, eleven o'clock, permanent is eleven o'clock from fourteenth of January. Then we will have not only Saturday, Sunday, all the days.
My second classes are there, Mathaji.
Mathaji, join YouTube.
I cannot attend because of the class.
No problem, you can attend on YouTube, Mathaji, not a problem. So you can check it out on YouTube, but just ensure that you read whatever we have covered so that you are up to date and whenever you can join.
I want to attend live, no, Mathaji. Because my bhakti shastri classes are running.
Mathaji, that is exactly the point actually because we are having Saturday, Sunday, we might have Bhakti Viper classes for me. So that is the reason I have moved eleven o'clock so that we have studied on all the seven days. Because they asked us when we will start Bhagavad Gita, Bhagavatam will start. We have five books left, small books, we will finish them. Every day we will be reading all of the individual verses of the Bhagavad Gita, right? We will complete end to end Bhagavad Gita, all the verses, translation, purpose, how we are doing now and then we will go on to Bhagavatam first canto. That is the desire, so let's see how far it manifests. From fourteenth July, which I believe is a Sunday, which is also the Tamil New Year day, from that day we will do eleven o'clock. NOD will end, end to end, that is that only. NOD will end on twelfth of, twelfth of January, then from thirteenth, which is a Sunday, we will, fourteenth, which is a Sunday, we will do every day eleven o'clock, yeah?
You have started NOD now, you have started NOD now.
No, 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 we will come to NOD in our session, we will come to NOD later on. So first we have to complete certain books, we are going in the proper sequence, okay? NOD sessions I was doing for a different forum, right? Not here. So here what we will do, we were doing proper, following proper sequence here, Mathaji. So all of us are reading together, we started with, you know, Krishna Consciousness, the matchless gift. From there we are progressing, we completed about twelve books. So after this, we will do Science of Self-Realization and then after that we will proceed with two, three other books. Then we will go to Bhagavad Gita, then we will go to Bhagavatam first canto and then we will do Nectar Devotion also parallel with Bhagavad Gita. We will see how that can be done, okay?
Because I, Homilam, Mathaji, I landed only today.
Okay, okay, I hope you pray for all of us.
Traveling is very much.
Yeah, just keep us in your prayers, Mathaji.
Yeah, pray for all the reading group, Mathaji.
Hari Bol.
Mathaji, Chetan, all the students.
Yeah, they are postgraduate study, Prabhupada is saying, preliminary study Bhagavad Gita. Graduate study is Bhagavatam, postgraduate study Chetan and Charitaamrit. We will do Bhagavatam and then Chetan and Charitaamrit, okay, Mathaji? After that, we will become very close knit bond and we will also try and meet also sometime. We can have a trip together or something.
What, Mathaji?
Yeah, eleven o'clock.
Evening.
Krishna, Krishna, evening.
Four to five is the best time actually.
Hare Krishna, Mathaji, can you give the list of the books?
Eleven is cooking, I have been cooking, it is very difficult, I have other two classes.
What I do, I put a cooker in the gas and then I come, after eleven, eleven to eleven forty-five, then I go, then I have to prepare lunch. I am also a granny, Mathaji. I also have work at home, but we need to work around, when we have a schedule that is, we need to work around that time.
All of us have that. The class is very late, Mathaji.
Ah, so that is what, so whichever class we want to attend, we prioritize that and we work around our schedule according to that class. I am not saying attend only, attend my class only, right? Whichever classes inspire us, please attend that class and you know, plan your schedule according to that class, right? It's not humanly possible to attend everybody's classes, right? So whatever inspires you, you can attend those classes and if you like my classes also, you can attend on YouTube, right? And whenever possible, please do attend the live sessions, all right?
Yes, Mathaji, can you give the list of the books? From which book after we have to give another book?
Already shared in the group, Mathaji, we already shared it in the group.
We are newcomers, no, Mathaji, that's fine.
So I will share it later, next time, whenever we start a new book, that time I will share it, okay, Mathaji?
Okay, Mathaji. Afternoon, it is not possible.
Eleven o'clock.
Four to five, four to five.
Mathaji, you changed it so many times, you don't want to, you know, we went eleven, twelve, one, two, Jinkaana hai, we will come. So what we will do, we will stick to eleven to eleven forty-five AM, Indian standard time, from fourteen, right? You can join now, now it is at twelve thirty only, from now to say fourteenth of the, fourteenth of January, please join at twelve thirty. After that, whoever are serious, because I want only those people who are serious, you should not miss any class. Because we were going verse by verse of Bhagavad Gita, if we skip in between or we don't attend, then we will lose track, right? And then we will, we will miss it out and then it will become difficult.
That is the reason I am asking you, that is the reason.
So that's what, so now until fourteenth, please join at twelve thirty, if you are interested, otherwise at eleven o'clock, otherwise attend on YouTube. Regularly follow it on YouTube also because I am actually going to put session one, session two, session three like that, so you can follow that also for every book. Okay, Mathajis? Hare Krishna, so today is an all, Mathaji's session.
Thank you, thank you, Dhyanath Pranam.
Shri Gurudeva Ki Jay.